And with this, by the reading of the floor of law, by the reading of the citizens of the United States of America, and to their love for the same, on a mission under God, in the visible, who truly is a soul.
Thank you.
Egerton?
Yes.
Havetis?
Here.
Beatrice?
Here.
Clegham?
Here.
Bushian?
Here.
Holorton?
Here.
Pachus?
Here.
Gunn?
Here.
Walkerly?
Here.
Over. Solos and Marrowan and Jeter and Hennick.
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the July meeting?
Yes, can the big motion approve this, so I can...
Second. All vote please.
Egerton? Havetis? Beatrice?
Yes.
Clegham?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Holorton? Pachus?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Walkerly?
Yes.
Over.
Before I forget, I had a call earlier this evening from about now sort of evidently the Reverend Jeter thinks of pop still solicitor for Brandyford. But the Reverend Jeter, Mr. Bart Begshaw, asked for 10 minutes of our time in the next meeting, our next regulatory meeting. And the purpose is to review the new zoning map. So I would ask you to make sure that there's time set aside in the minutes for any agenda for that meeting, okay? And requires no action of the board. You know, he had a new business on the agenda this evening. It's an application for a garage pole barn at 900 Central Avenue. And the applicant chooses Yeneko, and I understand he's in the audience at the present time. Yeneko, the microphone, it dismounts, you don't have to have it down now. Mr. Yeneko, would you give a fix of mic, raise your hand? You solemnly swear affirm that testimony or back witness for tonight is true through and accurate to the test of your knowledge. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this application is for, Mr. Yeneko is proposing to install a or construct a pole barn 24 by 40 feet at his residence at 900 Central Avenue. I reviewed the advertisement that he placed in the newspaper. And although there's some errors as far as what variances he's requiring or requesting, he did have a general request for any and all waivers or variances which may be required. It's my understanding that this property is situated in an R1 zone. I reviewed the requirements of accessory, are requirements, are we wanting accessory buildings or garages in an R1 zone? And I believe they are as the following, if I'm incorrect, then you can, I understand for any accessory building or garages, the maximum size is 16 feet by 24 feet. The applicant is proposing a pole barn measuring 24 by 40 feet. The maximum height for any accessory building or garage is 12 feet in R1 zone. The applicant is proposing a pole barn of 18 feet. The ordinance also states that only one car garages are permitted in a one car, in an R1 zone. It appears by the application that this may be a multi-car, a multi-car garage. When after, any accessory building or garage in an R1 zone that butts at the J C side street, I believe this property isn't a corner. The building cannot be closer than 10 feet from that side road. The applicant is proposing 20 feet, which appears that he would be in performance on that issue. The requirement for such a structure in an R1 zone says it cannot be closer than five feet from a rear, the rear yard property line. Joe's proposing a variance of three feet. So it looks like in my review of this that four variances, both variances would be required and reviewed for consideration by the board.
John, do you inspect this? Do you have a letter on this?
We did not do a letter because it's just a bulk variance application, so the policy is going to go with that one. I agree with Peter's analysis.
There's no official site plan application? The only, the only plan that was submitted, Mr. Chairman, was I think a survey prepared apparently on Mr. Yeneko when he purchased the property. Mr. Yeneko hand drew the location of the, of the proposed build. I didn't have a chance, I took a reading of Mr. Yeneko procedurally before the meeting, but I know it's this board's policy that they like to see something prepared by an engineer or a surveyor to ensure the exact location of that, of any proposed structure.
Yeah, Mr. Solicitor, it's been my opinion, I looked at, I wanted to go down and go on the property. There was Carlos Park there, there's skids and everything. I decided that I didn't want to enter the property based on those, on those parameters that I ran into.
Mr. Chairman, according to one of the other things on such a bulk variance, these nature is what, what the applicant has to prove that under the negative criteria, that this does not impact the neighborhood by granting such a request? And that it is not a major deviation from our ordinance requirements. So I believe the applicant, in order to show that there's some type of hardship or need, has to convince or testify to the board the reason he needs to build one or wants to build one larger than what our ordinance requires. I mean, and, you know, is, is needing to be able to do this. Mr. Yeneko, you want to say something?
Well, I was going to say two things. If I have to, I can move it to the five feet instead of the three. I prefer to save that two foot of yard, but if I have to, I'll concede that, whatever you guys recommend.
I'm sorry, I intend here to...
Whatever you guys recommend. If you want me to go the five feet back, I would really have no definite problem with that part of it. The other thing is, the way my yard slopes, it would be difficult to build it anywhere else because of the grade that flattens off in the back.
So you have to do substantial excavation?
I would have to if I built it anywhere else. The other thing is, the way the yard goes down, it would not be high. It would just seem the front of it from the road coming down to your work side street. And as a bonus, it's going to give me a little privacy from the industrial park back there.
What's the purpose of the requirement for such a large building?
Well, this way I would be able to restore the two cars that I have inside of it in addition to my wife's car.
My question?
Yes.
You're going to get into the, into the pole barn from the existing driveway, right, John?
Until I get...
Cars?
Temporarily. I'm going to have to until I get to a request for a curb cut.
Building says the doors are going to be facing ninth avenue, is that correct?
They are.
Okay, you have 20 feet.
I will be able to get into that. I will be able to get into one of the doors. That's why there's also my picture shit showing, picture on the side. Until I get a curb cut, yes.
20 feet. Yes, it's 20 feet. There you go. Mr. Yeneko, what is the date they just started?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to answer that? The reason why I ask that...
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I told you about, the reason why I asked that question is, you currently got out of driveway, I've seen it.
Yes.
As far as I want to, to get from the driveway to propose pole barn, is that going to be dirt? And your 20 feet, does that include the apron that's going to be?
It does.
Or me?
It does.
And what's going, what's going to, how are you going to get that dirt? Are you going to put concrete all the way back to the pole?
Oh, no, no, I would not.
So you're going to write a term?
Parks. Uh, car track rate, it's a good mark from digging in. It's like a mesh, so it spreads out the weight when it comes down. It will let the grass go right through it, but it wouldn't kill it.
And it's, it's, it's pretty odd that because you have to do something like that, if you want to get a variance from five feet to three feet.
Well, I wanted to preserve, I wanted to preserve more of the yard. I'm putting it back for...
Into your property, you understand? I just wanted to answer this question.
I have a question for you, sir. Because it's not a formal application?
Excuse me.
Was that your... Because it's not a formal application?
Oh, no, this is a formal application.
Okay. Has proof of service been satisfied, Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
Sir, okay, thank you.
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, that is not formally presented was it's a hand sketch by the applicant on a previous survey that I presume he obtained when he bought the property.
Excuse me, would this be that?
That's correct.
It was dated on it.
Now, it's not dated or sealed?
No, it's not dated or sealed, no. Now, the other thing, if there is going to be an apron coming off of ninth, that's not, at a driveway, is that what you intend?
I was intending later to... But they didn't, no one seemed to be able to answer how I went about getting a curb cut permit.
You would have to get a road open from the, from the borough. And that's not, that's not this board's permit.
Okay.
John, I don't think that was dedicated yet. It's not that, somebody, the rancher's room. And the borough is responsible for something like that. But okay.
I mean, we think that the...
We maintain it, we've snowed out at center, but I don't think we are...
Yeah, I still think it would be in the borough. I'd rather than go to the borough than go to the river screen to get curb cut. You know, and the other thing is, what you're going to build within the right of way, you have a 20 foot setback from your property line. Typically, that's upwards of 10 feet from the curb. So that's within the right of way itself. That's, you're going to have to put a concrete apron. You're not going to be able to put these metal grates...
I would need an apron.
Right away, that's what I'm excited.
And I think, Joe, that that probably should be shown, some kind of plan for this board to make a determination.
Well, now you got, within 125 feet, if you're successful in getting your curb cut, you're going to have people making, you're going to be making turns in and out of there for then 20, 60, 70 feet at an intersection.
You mean, it's too close to get curb cut, most likely?
Well, I think, I think you'd have trouble getting any approval like that from any county agency or city agency. I, I don't know.
It's county, you have to consult with the borough. This is a municipal road, this is a county road.
Look, and I understand it's just there was this question. He'd be, he'd be, it would be close to the intersection of Central.
Do you know the distance I would need?
You're right. You're going to be 24, you're waiting, is this roughly 90 feet from the right of way of Central?
Sounds like 11,000 square feet.
95, 120, 120?
Right. And I mean, he is putting the pole barn as far away from the intersection as possible.
Right.
Even asking for variance, put it further than what it's allowed. I don't know that 90 feet from an intersection for a driveway for a garage where you're restoring cars.
I mean, it's not, I'm not going to use it all the time, no, it's... If I was going to use it all the time, I would make this completely...
Any other questions?
I think there is a question, though, that if you don't have a curb cut, how are you, I think Mr. Dickinson's correct, how are you going to get the cars into the pole barn? Is that going to damage the property, routing over grass or?
Well, that's why I seen them before, that it, so it won't kill the grass. Like I say, I'm not going to be driving all the time to kill the lawn, I would not want that. Before I would do that, I would pave the section.
Excuse me, I would just said a 10 foot, but should you move, okay? Should you move? I don't think you want to take the pole barn with you, but whatever. But the next over that house may turn that driveway that you're looking at into In-N-Out Park, is a curb barn. That's why we're a little concerned about that, at least, that's why I think you questioned me. Because when we allow us, allow these variances to come to build, it might be...
That's correct.
So it'll be forever?
Oh.
Well, um...
So, because you know, I think what the board's saying, they, they want to know, so they, if they do grant any relief, they might condition it that you can only enter this from maybe Central or Ninth, so you can't be entering it from both locations. I mean, that might be a consideration that they have.
Sure, I had a question for you. What is, what is the purpose for, I mean, if you're honestly asking us to grant you a deviation of here and three times the size, you're going from 16, which is our ordinance, to 40. Why so big?
It would, that's a lot. It's, it's more to, well, it's not for parking my car, it's to give room around it to work on, you know, it's, you know, it's not going to pull the car in and out like you would in a garage. If I build a detached house, just unload the groceries and keep the snow off it, it's more for work.
I think three times the size of our ordinance. What is, what is the hardship that you're trying to put forward?
Well, I was only going to make 32, as I've seen others, but I thought the, would also give me more of the privacy from the lights and everything up there. You know, I don't know if you'd come down, if they'd come right into my yard. CBS was kind enough to actually turn out the one light on the back of their building for me. I used to have to call them every time they changed the bulb, but they finally put a note inside of it, not to put a bulb in it.
I have one more question. You say you want to use this for restoration of locomobiles, et cetera. Can you keep any chemicals back there to do anything?
No.
Or anything like that?
No. I might get an engine lift later, but...
You're going to be working on anyone else's cars other than yours?
I would have to die. No.
Will Paul remember, is anybody else on the board?
You're referring to cars, but you're not going to paint them back there or anything like that?
Uh, I couldn't do things, one of them can't, guy.
Are you a hobbyist, you restore cars?
Yes, I, my wife had her Firebird since it was brand new in 78. I'm going to do hers and my 78 Dodson, that's the first two on the lineup.
Let me ask you, why do you need 18 foot height from the center of the hay floor?
Well, for my engine lift, I will pull it up without being in the way.
Engine lift, you take the middle off and pull your engine out like that?
Well, I want to get one of those ones with the two sides, the electric jobs where the two motors lift the thing up.
How high are you going to have the car in the air when you, when you work, you going to work under it or?
Well, I don't know if that's a possibility, I've never done that, but that's what my uncle told me, that I'd be getting taller, it'd be easier to get under it.
These cars that you restored, you intend to restore, or you don't intend to sell anyone out there, do you?
No, I want to fix them up for us. It's her car and my Dodson. That's the first two, and then I'm going to my Jeep. Which is an eight six.
Anyone else in the group?
Could you really tell us what form he would need from, from four variances he would need?
Four variances, right now, the maximum size of an accessory building is 16 by 24.
Maximum size?
He's proposing 24 by 40. The maximum height of any accessory building or garage is 12 feet, he's requesting 18. Our ordinance says that any accessory building or garage can only be a one car garage. And he's, I, my own estimate for 24 by 40, looks like that could hold at least four cars. The side yard to the street tends required, but it is with one. And he already said he removed the building, I guess, for five feet instead of three?
I'd like not to know.
Joe, how close is the building next to you, the rear of the property?
Behind me?
Yeah. All right, so a fire, a fire truck could get in there, behind your lot?
It, it's a large wood.
Okay, all right, I'm not familiar.
That probably show up, I mean, keep that with...
Well, that wasn't submitted, though, with the application, so I didn't know if there was another building real close to his property in that.
No.
Well, you have to consider, you have fire apparatus to get back there. And you drew this rectangle on here where the proposed building is located?
I did. I tried to keep it pretty close to...
Doesn't that invalidate the survey? Doesn't that kind of invalidate the survey, if you just provide yourself to add something to it?
Well, that's a photocopy, I had an original survey. That's photocopies. And I didn't...
And the survey, to me, leaves a lot to be desired. It's not, it's not been the practice that we get one that's sealed, well, at least we get one with a date on it. And who the, who the engineer was, or who the civil, civil guardian was that did it.
Let me see if my copy of the survey, it might got cut off when I photocopied it, I think it's McMillan.
Well, that's the marriage on the bottom of the survey.
Oh, okay.
Not the marriage on the bottom, but there's a date, there's a seal, the chairman says. And I'm still up the wall of anything, but what, again, is the hardship that you're asking, what is the hardship that you're asking is to bring in these four variances? What's the hardship?
Well, if I put it anywhere else, it would require a lot of excavation, with grading, the way, et cetera.
It really goes back to size, Joe. It really would be three hours for variances far for how big you want it. It's not the location of it, it's how big you want this thing, and what is the hardship that you're asking of the grantee is?
If I would make it any smaller, I couldn't really do much work in it. If I made it smaller, it would be just for everyday use, not actual working on the cars.
So you testified to the board tonight that you needed this size of building to restore three vehicles?
Well, it's going to start off, yes.
And after that, you wouldn't have any more?
Well, I do, like I said, when I'm done with them, I might find another, because I love Jeeps. I'd love to buy my sister-in-law's in Colorado, she doesn't want to give it up.
Mr. Yeneko, in the process of restoring these vehicles, if you have more than three, where are you going to park for three here, on Nike Avenue or on Central?
If I got more than three, I would have to rent a place.
Say that again?
If I got more than three, I would have to rent a place, but I doubt I'm going to go beyond three. My age, I'll probably finish these three and be just about the end.
In, in the process of restoring a vehicle, doesn't it require a lot of mechanical work and a lot of painting?
Well, I don't paint.
Of course, they get painted, yeah.
I don't repaint, but a friend of mine painted, if you ever seen my blue truck, he painted that. In two days, I would trust him to paint them, because I can't do painting.
You're going to paint them on your property?
No, he has a garage that he has a compressor and everything.
You have to somehow put them on a level boy and take them over there and bring them back and put them in your spot?
Hmm. Well, that's the other thing, you know, that would make it...
Painting in a residential area would probably cause a lot of...
A little stink, smell.
For your neighbors.
Yeah, the smell.
Joe, the, the one application you said is a 10 by 12 shed here. Is that shown on your survey, is that what, this is this concrete?
Yes.
Is it, you have a 10 by 20 carport, is that shown on the survey?
No.
See, again, see, that was that, you added that on one after you bought the property?
It was a, yes, it's a temporary, I will get rid of it.
The board doesn't have an accurate survey of that, they, they, in other words...
I don't know this is as good.
It's, it's not, Mr. Chairman. In other words, and this is not for you, generally, because you really, this is probably the first time you ever did this.
Yes.
See, you, you've added to the property after you bought, there's a carport there, but these, the, the board doesn't see where that carport is here. I think you're, and then what you're going to do is... All I see is a concrete... Yeah, now you're describing you had a 10 by 12 shed, and I guess that's, that's this concrete slab, right?
Yes, that was there when I...
But the carport, the 10 by 20 carport is not there.
Correct.
All right, where is the carport? Oh, okay, so, carport's right here, not outside to the house. Is that on a slab?
No.
I'm just going to have one more question. Is this picture here, is that what you would be looking at from your rear window there?
Yes.
Have another door, another eight foot door. It's eight foot, I assume you're going to put cars in and out that door?
Well...
And I'm wondering again, only because...
That one wasn't for cars to go in and out.
But you have another door here for entry?
Yeah.
It's going to be for something other than going in and out. So what, what I'm concerned about is, is that, I don't think you could drive the cars on dirt.
You mean on ninth?
We talked, we talked about, we talked about concrete on side, taking it all the way to the, where you have 20 foot side with the double door car.
No, that's the apron.
We talked about that and the apron, okay? All right, so we talked about concrete, then you already told me you can't have what you want here, the structure, whatever they are.
No, you can't have it within the right of way.
Okay. Okay, so, let me expand that. Now, you're going to bring, you're going to bring your car in, okay? And you're, are you going to drive into that one and come in this door?
If they want to be a curb cut, I was going to come down through the yard.
What, what is, what is outside of your fence, the nine out, that's all grass there, right?
Yes.
Okay, if you get, if you're successful in your attempt to get a curb cut right here, right, would you want it two bar wide or one bar wide?
I would prefer two, and I'll be happy...
Then you're going to have to have add, you're going to have a curb there with sidewalk and a, an apron, right, and an apron with the empty grass. There's no place for anybody to walk, there's no pedestrian access there at all.
To be honest with you, Barry, the reason why we have all these touchments, we don't have what we need in front of...
Right, exactly.
On a, on a...
I agree with that.
You know, we're asking you all kinds of questions, if you would bring something, if you, if you'd love to go and hat, maybe we would have...
Joe, with the board would be, is everything on here? I mean, if you're going to put curb cut like you proposed and it's off the ninth street to be, how wide is going to be? They want to see where the existing carport is and where the measurements of that, so your survey, I think has to be, I think somebody's got to go back after it and, and take a look at it. And plot it, because the folks are having difficulty visualizing what you want to do here.
It's going to give you time to see that it will be kind of hidden down there.
It was decided redundant, I was, I wasn't willing to walk under the property.
Right, okay, yeah, that's, you know, but they're, they're the problems that I'm getting interrupted.
Okay, I guess what I would need to know is, I guess, first of all, to get the curb cut, what do I need to fill out paperwork with?
Well, you should maybe contact McNamara, and then before you investigate any curb cuts, because you don't know if you're going to get an approval. You would have maybe talked to McNamara, and I would use him, because he probably still has, I don't know how long they keep serving John, or...
This is hand drawn, so...
No, the original one.
Mr. Solicitor, would I be wrong in my attempt here, Mr. Yeneko, to give us an official site plan and hire himself a lawyer?
Well, I don't know if he, obviously, you should have even engineer take a look at this or a surveyor.
It's definitely incomplete, it's definitely not willing to vote on, have a permit at this point.
And the board may have difficulty, I, I don't know, regarding the size of the building. That's one of the, so to quote that, it's more than... building, that's one of the, so to quote that, it's more than two and a half, no more than two, more than twice the size of what I ordered.
Well, you know, also, there's no positive criteria and there's no negative criteria to be oysteried. I feel confident that I'll have enough information for me to really get an informed approval of this.
I agree. I also think you need to have a plan of how you're gonna get these vehicles into this garage, because as Mr. Beatrice raises a question about the eight foot door, hey, seeing your house, there's no driveway to that door, how, how's a vehicle gonna get there?
I have a question. Would you guys prefer a single entrance from ninth as opposed to a double car, and they would have to drive, like a Y coming in?
I don't, I don't know why you would need a double Y driveway or like that.
I didn't think I did. I didn't think I did.
But you could put a single driveway in that split, don't you, you know?
Right, but that's why I prefer the Y.
The board wants to see is how, how is that anymore?
Yeah, those are the questions that were asked, you mentioned, we're not giving a pressure that we're against it.
Right.
But, but we don't have information, so we haven't, and from the question that, well, maybe you.
Yeah, I prefer a Y entrance also, I think you would've wanted a double. Um, the other thing is, if I got the impression the curb cut was too close to the intersection, were you saying I would not be allowed to drive straight down through my yard into it?
Well, there's a lot of commercial traffic going that street too, Mr. DiNeco.
Oh, believe, when I moved in, it was a one-way, I know.
You can add your survey or your engineer to take a look and check the ordinance and see what their farm is for setback for a drive, for a driveway from an intersection.
And, just a suggestion, I would, I'd trust the four, the four items that our solicitor mentioned to you, your size, your height, your rear setback, and, uh, why, I guess, the size is actually the size of the building, right?
Well, you might wanna take a look at the size, because it is.
Do you have all those notes, Mr. DiNeco?
Size, height, well, where's setback, I'm willing to go find if you.
So that, yeah, that will eliminate that.
I mean, you're talking size, the height?
I'm saying, what, what, I think what really confused the issue this evening was when you said you're gonna try and get a curb cut on ninth hour, recommended side of the building, no reference to that.
Well.
Nobody knows anything about it.
Well, that was, if, well, I tried to get an answer ahead of time, whether I would be allowed, that's why I put it back.
Yeah, but it's not the boards, it's not the boards, it's not in our purview to tell you what you need. It's for you to get an, an informed opinion from a professional. The professional can diagnose and go over a plan like our solicitor did for the board.
And that's the engineer?
He's our expert.
Yeah, I think you gotta get an engineer, yeah, you're, you're trying, it, it's, it could be confusing and complicated, and the board's just saying they don't have much, they can't make a decision.
Well, that's why I wanted to do a, what do they call it, a preliminary, and then the meeting informal, and it got canceled.
But what, if the board, what I'm getting, aren't ready to vote on it tonight, if it was called, although, that doesn't sound, it would be ridiculous.
Not, not.
So, you could withdraw the application and get an engineer?
On hold, like?
Well, no, that, that's, we don't like to put things on hold, because you're gonna have to have an engineer redo, and then just do the application again. And he can confer with John and say, this is what my, my, uh, my client wants to do. I mean, I, I don't know if they would wanna put it on hold.
You mean, I'm gonna have to go through the.
And you're gonna have to re-notify people, because this, what you're showing here really isn't, the neighbors really don't know what you're doing, that they buy this, they, they see, well, Joe wants to put a faux pas on here, but, you know, there's nothing about egress, ingress, which way you're coming in, and they, those items should be shown on a plan.
They have to, it's inaccurate.
I thought I totally don't put a curb cut ever, I agree on that.
I don't know.
That's not the, that's not the hedge, that's not the hedge.
That's not, that's not a network.
Problem is, these.
That was a major issue.
These four variances you're asking for, that's the hitch, you know, you're asking for variances, and quite frankly, we don't have, you know, near the information we need to make this kind of decision. This, this survey is inaccurate at best, it's outdated, it's hand drawn, and some of the things on there are not accurate. Aside from the, just the size of the structure you're asking for, you might wanna take a look at that as well. It's so many times our ordinances. And there's, I, I firstly, like Mr. Dickinson said, we haven't heard any negative criteria or positive criteria, but the idea of getting us to give variances, it is only applicant approval hardship or positive criteria. And as of this evening, I haven't heard any positive criteria for the public good or any hardship. So I just want you, I just want you to be aware of what the criteria is for getting variances. It's not opinion, we don't, it's not our opinion, it is, the fact of the matter is, there are rules we have to follow, and if we're going to grant variances, there has to be a good reason for us to grant those variances, not because I like cars, because I do. It's, I'm gonna be honest with you, it's because you've met the criteria for a hardship and you've brought positive criteria to the table for the, for the good of one of you, not just the good of you. Except, that's what has to, that's the rules.
So I gotta do everything over again?
Pretty much. Yep.
Couldn't have made this an informal one.
Well, even if you did, Joe, you would have to re-notify.
I don't mind noting, am I gonna have to pay the engineer's fees and all that over again?
Because when I was with Mr. DiNeco. Mr. DiNeco, your own, your own testimony that indicated to us that the topography of the land believes a lot to be desired also, as far as an entrance or exit for vehicles. I was thinking engineer would be better, would better advise you what you should be doing than laypeople who have no construction experience whatsoever, other than one member of the board.
No, I would do whatever was required. That's why I put that in there, whatever recommendations were made by the board, you know, only go down to thirty-two feet, I would do ninety-three.
We have to have an E warning on a, on a site plan, we have to have a plan, we have to have an E warning, this is exacting what we are approving or not approving, that's pretty much how it has to go. It can't be my opinion or John's opinion.
Well, no, that's, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Joe, thank you.
Now, did you wanna withdraw your application, or do you want the board to vote on this?
My recommendation to board would be, if you don't have enough information, then we reject the application.
No, I, I didn't wanna, because I know where I'd be.
Okay, you are, yeah, doesn't mean you couldn't be, but I'll say, if I, if I withdraw, I would get a total problem.
Okay.
Yeah, then have you entered your vote?
So we have the applicant's permission to withdraw, and you have?
Yes, that's what it says, yeah.
Okay.
Was there anyone here from the public that wanted to speak on this matter?
That, that, I don't think you have any other business.
No, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, the, the project of Mr. Luzzuk, you want the, that larger piece of R two, they, currently, they revised, they, they don't have an application yet, they weren't trying to get on the October tenant, but they sent over revisions to their plans, they're withdrawing their request of put down.
The better date, uh, July twenty-seventh.
No, this one is August thirtieth, Mr. Chairman, and a new set of clean, I believe that each member a copy of. Yeah, but what they're doing is they've eliminated any request of construct down access, right? Um, they are, they do not need a density variance, right, are they correct, John?
Mr. Chairman, I have a memo here, a kind of documents that's toward what the variances are, as shown on the plan.
Yeah. Mr. Uh, Mr. Fulton is gonna step down from this hearing anything about this application.
Well, there's no application.
He's within two hundred feet, he has other business to take some out here.
But it's, it's just, uh, just one more thing here.
Yeah, it's just a memo, memo, we took a look at the plan, the board recalls, a couple years back, this application was submitted for subdivision approval, um, it had fifty-five square feet, so what we did was we compared what's before, before the board, at least on the concept review, compared it to the original application, which never went anywhere, I think it was with Colin. But if you look, um, there'll be variances necessary for front yard setback, fifty of the lots will require that. They're proposing twenty-five foot setbacks for the ordinance for the yard free zone requires a third foot setback. Um, there are four lots that'll have a variance, will require variance for aggregate inside yard, those are the four lots, uh, where the townhomes are arc the road.
Did it make reference to the numbers on the, on the map?
I did not, I apologize.
Okay.
If you look at the map, though, wherever there's a red line or a red number, that's.
I can't think of throughout the whole map, doesn't it, no?
No, I missed it, well, well, it does for.
Oh, that's for setback.
Yes. The lot size, there are eleven lots that will require lots of variance, uh, the minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet, where the ordinance requires eight thousand square feet, the average is nine to five hundred square feet. The original submission had a request for thirty lots, which didn't need not be a requirement, so that's been reduced to thirty down to eleven.
And John, you said the aggregate side door setbacks, they're the ones.
There are lots two through thirty-six. So there's a bunch of, so if you look on the right-hand side, closer to each, you know?
Okay, so we got lot three, four, five, and six?
No, they're, they're just lots.
Lot is thirty-two through thirty-five.
Okay, there's a, there's five right there.
This is four. Well, four of them don't have the aggregate, the one on the corner desk.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last, uh, set of variances that'll be necessary is for lot frontage, twenty-seven of the lots do not have the required frontage, the minimum is sixty-five point one, and the required is a, um, several of these are the seven thousand square foot lots, which are seventy by one hundred, the hundred foot debt is what, those are the ordinance requirement, um, the other ones are around the, uh, arcs from the curbs, so they, they don't need the eight foot at the setback, but they need the wide.
That's lots eleven through seventeen, yeah.
That would be eleven through seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, um, seven to nine, ten, and then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-two through thirty-five. So we, we did this memo, um, I did speak with the applicant, Mr. Ford, I think what the applicant is looking for is just some feedback from the board, um, whether the board is more inclined for an application of this nature versus the townhomes, which were, was, I think it's still an application for the board, is it not?
Yeah, I think that one was just continued.
Yeah, I think it has been continued, so.
I certainly like the idea of the additional open space, what these allow versus the townhomes.
Yeah, and, and they, they advised us to meet the gross density.
I, I have just one on it, you sir. Have lots eleven, lots eleven through seventeen?
Yes.
Seven-sevens is forty-nine, right?
Yep.
How about, let's say, eight thousand, right? And they, they could eliminate one lot, and everybody eight thousand? Just, just my point.
Not bad.
I had the same option.
That's not bad, one of the.
I did it.
They give you eliminated one or two.
I did it, I, I thought I was. No, athletic school, reform school. You can do the math again and come up with my goals. Well, as of yet, the committee has not met to discuss any of this application.
Pardon me? What committee did that do? Or, or committee? Well, and they're not reviewing this application.
No.
The charge was to answer the letter, and in the process of answering the letter, and a letter went from, for conversation with, this gentleman and our attorney, it said we're not doing that anymore, we'll have submitted a plan, so it has to be.
And, and I misunderstood, I've been a different person.
Yeah, I think we were trying to, we were worried about standards before, and now we're gonna.
Does that eliminate the townhouse?
We need standards, because it would be the down rooms, so.
You know, on my part, I was glad to see this applicant spoke to the, our engineer and came to some, it's solicitors who can then do their marketing, and, and through their conversation, and then we were notified if he's gonna have a new, a new application. Right, and I think the first meeting that he was at, that I was at, the, the, the community was adverse to townhouses, and the board was definitely, there was confusion.
Mr. Ford seemed like he wanted to appease.
He wanted to try and make everybody happy, yeah. So he's eliminated that, but then coming in, he's asking us, well, I, I did eliminate that, so which is, so could you make concessions to some of the lots? And that's basically what he was, you know, what he was, what he said. And I agree with Mr. Chairman, too, I'm sure John does, that maybe if one was eliminated, could we get some more feedback? You know, maybe John could talk to her. It's obvious that we, we need to come here and ask and talk with about this, and then we have to find out what the public thinks. Yeah, no, absolutely. But I think the big thing, the elimination of the townhouses, that was, that was a real.
I agree, it was a move, it was a move in the right direction, and it's a win-win.
Absolutely.
Horizontal.
So, and I think what he did is, by presenting this to John, if there was anything else tonight that the board, gee, woman, maybe we would like to see this, or that, maybe John could present that to him before he makes his final revisions to his final plan that he wants to submit.
Yeah, I, I.
Is it that, or is there a subcommittee of the board that we can sit down with them around the table and have the board, several board members there that say, this is what we feel, and get some feedback, put some dialogue on them?
But then, you know, you're eliminating some comment from members of the board that won't be, it's still dead, that's not true. What do you need to do with the final decision?
If the subcommittee says, we think you should eliminate one of these lots, and they do, and then they submit a subdivision plan, it still has to be presented.
Still, for a little bit.
It's not dividing in any kind of a meeting like that. And, 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 I represent a lot of towns, and most towns have a subcommittee, I mean, I do a lot of private in hearing work.
Yeah, they love a town.
We go try and get some feedback from the board, hey, what do you guys think about? Just asking for the variance, and sometimes you hear that there's no way we can get that, and it saves us the, the expense of engineering the sets of plans that, like they did the first time, that got submitted, never lent. I think that's what they're trying to do.
It doesn't eliminate, eliminate the public's input.
They still have to be notified.
They still have to be notified, they can comment, you know, play that concern.
I think the workshop is a great, I think this is the largest application, it's fifty-four million, thirteen years I've been on this board.
This is the only time they're gonna get, they make it sound like last one.
It's gonna take more than twenty, it's gonna take more than two hours to get through all the intricacies of this, and I would be willing to deal on a workshop, um, if, if anybody was so inclined to have one.
John, I guess you could reach out to, or I could reach out to Luzzuk, or.
Oh, the pleasure of the mayor and chairman.
Yeah, the mayor and chairman. But the big, they eliminated the big, it looks like they've eliminated the biggest concern.
Right, you got.
That, that would hurt.
Yeah.
And then what the, what the workshop people could do, they'd be able to inform the rest of the board by email or something of, of the workshop minutes.
And then based on that, the plan would be revised.
Correct.
Would be revised a little.
I would volunteer my time, although this is in the evening.
Well, we only have one member of the original committee that hasn't discussed it at all with us.
Right.
And I don't think that, that's when. And I don't think that's going to happen. So I think if we assist myself and you, and we sit down with one other member of the board...
If that is one of the board's asking you, mine, or something, I think that definitely Mr. Mr. up there.
Oh, yeah.
That would be my input.
If you're choosing, you can do whatever you want. You're chairman.
I'll be with the mayor and our liaison from council and industry leaders.
And if you ask John and I, then we can reach out?
Oh, for the subcommittee for this one, for this application and this application.
Right, well, and it is a major application, yeah, so it's... Now, I know speaking...
And I think that gives the board the opportunity to get your input into it right at the beginning, right before it's fully...
Well, John, would you be available for input on that? Because, you know, as far as a complete review goes, it's a moot point for us to go into complete review if we don't have professional opinion.
No, I would be absolutely correct.
Okay, and we'll take that action on termination of the meeting.
Okay.
I'll be with the mayor. We'll come up with a committee. I think it's one of the members that can brief this committee at their... At their pleasure. Yes, people, and it'll convene before next month's meeting with recommendations to the act. So the... The...
Most components on that?
Roll call, please. Roll call, please, appoint the subcommittee. And we... We have to... And I'll make sure that the entire board is part of it, that the appointments will be put up. Gruenele, does this come before the board? And give us your name and address and... Trump is speaking, doesn't like...
Yes, this is unofficial business. My name is Lena White. This is my husband, Michael White. We're the owners of Five Eleven North Black Horse Pike. When we first purchased the property back in two thousand and five from Dr. Vasco, we were informed that it was residential slash commercial, and we specifically requested from him, you know, proof to show us, because we didn't want to purchase the property. Well, he provided us with a letter that was from the board stating it was residential slash commercial. We proceeded with the purchase. So we owned this property, you know, up to now, to find out just recently, and I believe, I can't remember exactly who informed you, but it was just strictly commercial.
I'm like...
This is Five Eleven North Black Horse Pike.
Five Eleven North?
Mm-hmm, Dr. Vasco, and here's the letter here. I mean, if you need to see the letter. It came from, I don't know if we'll be able to read it out loud. Yeah, and here's our deed. It was actually dated August the twenty-fourth. So what we're requesting, if it can... If it can... Yes, if it can revert back to residential slash... Yeah, what... We had converted it, right, because when we bought it, I mean, the place was actually hit, and we actually just totally renovated on the inside. We had a full kitchen in the back, and it was a half kitchen upstairs. So it was utilized as residential slash commercial, but we were told just recently it was just strictly commercial. And we was like, no way. We didn't... I know my husband and I had never requested for it to be, you know, transferred back to...
The front's on the Black Horse Pike?
Excuse me?
The property in front, so?
Yes, the front of the...
Your question, is that it's not commercial?
No, our... Right, our question, our statement is that when we first purchased it, it was with the knowledge that it was residential slash commercial. And we received proof from Dr. Vasco. We asked him for proof before we even purchased the building. That's before he gave us the letter. No, we're not living there. Right now, we have it up for sale.
Sort of, that it was residential use as a cap. Fulton said it was residential, right, in front. And in the back, it was a...
Yes, when we... Years ago, a couple of years ago, when we had it upstairs, we used upstairs for just an air to relax. We never lived there officially, but it was just, we just knew, we just knew our building was residential slash commercial. So this way, at any given time...
So since you purchased the property, it's continuing to be used residentially as well as commercial?
Yes.
Existing here?
Very good, okay. Now, if you don't use the residence, and it's in a commercial zone for a period of six months, it'd be considered an abandonment of the...
Well, right now, it's been up for sale for two years, and we have not sold it. You know, it's just not moving.
Right.
But we were informed, you know, that it's right now, it's only zoned for commercial, and I'm...
The current only interest we're getting in the property is to have it rented as a home. As a home. Because basically, it looks, you know, looking at it from the outside, it looks like... Looks like a residential home. So that's the dilemma we face with is, you know, we had it up for sale for two years, and it's not going to rent as a commercial.
The whole front end appears to be a residential.
It looks like a house, it does.
It was always continually used as residence, as a residence? You haven't changed it, the residence to commercial?
We never changed. We never changed it since we were owning.
Does it use commercially as well?
Yes, yes, it was.
Residentially and commercially?
Yes, so we will...
But you're looking to use it totally for residential use?
No, we would like for it to be denoted, zoned as residential commercial, because right now, zoned is commercial. We don't know at what point it was changed.
That's not within the purpose of the board to rezone.
We can't rezone that piece. You have to go to the township committee. But if you had somebody that wanted to live there, buy it as a residence, what you could do is make an application to this board for a use variance, and then the board would consider the historic use of that property that was always used as a residence. I can't guarantee you what they would do, but they would... They may look at that and say, look, this was always used as a residence. Let's give the applicant a use variance. Okay, so it's not like...
Because what we would like to do, because right now, again, it's listed for sale, and to make it... Yeah, for sale, but to make it more attractive to the next person, you know, who wants to utilize the building, is to let them know they can use it for residential slash commercial.
Could they rely on the pre-existing non-resident use?
Yeah, but if that was a bandage, that hasn't been...
But if they had it for sale and...
Yeah, that's an argument, John.
You can buy this and continue...
Or you could say it's a commercial zone with the possibility of residential use.
So we can list it then?
Is there... Do you have any property in property or own the property?
This is a driveway, and it's supposed to be about four cars.
For one car?
Yeah, actually, it's like four cars, man, keep it up.
Basically, it's a big thing.
Because we just need, you know, needed, I guess, everyone's opinion, just more so for the realtors, so we can say, it's okay to list it, you know.
I would say the commercial, the commercial zone possible residential use, continued residential use. And having a realtor put possible, if there is a problem, but I... It's always used as a residence.
So if somebody wanted to rent it as a home, live in it, you know, as a home, they would have to have a business?
It's that, but I don't know, was that a condition of the residential use, that it had to be a home office? I don't know. See, if it had, I don't...
Well, I know when we purchased it, we were told that if we use it as residential, it can only be used by the business owners.
Oh, okay.
So they could live there, but they can live there, but they, you know, if they have a business, but it has to be...
They had difficulty renting it to just a resident that doesn't have a business. All right, so that might have been one of the conditions, but yeah, I don't... Doesn't say that, Mr. Stewart.
Well, one of the problems we're currently having is, you know, with the economic situation that's going on, we've had that building listed for two years, and right now, we just went from two-income family to a one-income family. So it's really a hardship to try to, just trying to keep those property taxes up, keep the building up. Really, it's really becoming hard, and after two years, the only interest that we're getting is someone wanting to rent it as a... There's no businesses, no businesses are starting up. You know, that's the problem. There's a good area, Black Horse Pike, you know, good traffic and everything, but unfortunately, nobody is starting businesses. And we're basically, right now, in a really hard situation because we have to continue to keep the property up, but the taxes, taxes is going up, and it's really hard.
Yeah, and what's unfortunate is I know when we purchased the building, the assessment of the property was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. The assessment today is, and then it was with the taxes being at that time, five thousand dollars. The assessment of the property is still a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and our taxes on the property is eight thousand. So, you know, that's like under rails.
It's probably because it's a commercial property, right, yes. Taxes are high, I think, and commercial property, where they...
Well, if y'all have anybody who's interested in renting a lot, please push them away.
Anything you ask me, I have to look for someone with a little authority. Look for me.
But if we want, I mean, what, I mean, in lieu of what my husband was stating, if he wanted to rent it just for residential, is that a possibility? I mean, and what would the steps?
I think you might need a variance for that, okay, because it sounds like it was resident, commercial, but the stipulation is the business, only the business owner could use the residence.
Right, because what it was, it was no separate interest, like for it was a residential to go in and out. There was no separate interest for the resident.
I think without a piece of paper, when you go to the construction code official for a certificate of occupancy, without that certificate, it's going to be now a residential establishment. You'd have trouble getting your certificate of occupancy to rent it as a residence.
So, Mr. Rowan, couldn't they now...
Well, they can make an application for a use variance.
So, in other words, you come before us, before you even sell the property, come before us. You obviously have a hardship, and it's one of the criteria is for use variance. You're going to talk about the negative and the positive criteria. Is it going to hurt the town? Probably not, do what you want to do. Is it going to help the town? Probably, because the house's taxes will be taken up on a permanent basis. So I just think maybe you might want to think about coming in and getting a use variance sooner than later. That way, when you go to advertise, you can advertise it as a residential use permitted.
And that's it. How will you obtain the variance?
Is it... You have to get an application. I recommend that you may want to get legal advice, okay, and have maybe the attorney do the application for you. I mean, you can attempt to do it. There's no requirement. We're not a corporation, are you? But yeah, you just do an application, and you have to... You have to notify anyone that you want to be.
But that was...
Now, let me ask you a question. Because across the street, right across the street from the building, there is a residential...
That goes to your common criteria, that it's not deviating, and that would be one of your... Another argument, you know, along with the hardship one.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any matters for the planning board, informal application or questions? Anything that happened here this evening, what?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one in the board who should speak, I'll make a motion for the public to adjourn.
Votes in favor, votes in disagreement, all is considered. Josh, I hope the board's in the meeting is now adjourned, and there's a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Votes in favor, such for adjourn. The meeting is adjourned for so far, second one, ten... I've got... I've got the mic, and I can...